Next is the new Police Department Town Hall update. So, we finally got a permit last week and we did a refresher walkthrough earlier in the lead to make sure everybody's still on track with what they're doing. Todd Rayburn was getting together all quotes and all the information from all his subcontractors to find out how best he can spend the rest of the money that's still in the pot. And hopefully he'll have some things there soon. So, at least the project is moving forward.
I do have a question on this. Did you say you received a permit?
Yes.
When did the town shoot a permit?
The town, I don't think they did. I think, I think the state, I think what happened is Greg was getting the state permit because it wasn't done.
But you still need a town permit.
And then he sent it to the county and the county provided the permit. They, I guess they didn't ask for that.
So, did you, so if I...
Did you get the town permit for...
Hey, we're gonna do it right. You wanna do it right, Thomas?
Okay.
I mean, if you don't wanna do it right, then let's not do it right.
I think that we came before that, which means the project had town permits since it started building.
So, well, so it's good for the towns to not go through the proper process when we're just in charge, but it's not okay if I do this, you do it right, I'll be... But if, you know, if Tom and Carol will do it anytime before going there, it requires a permit. The county's gonna be able to move to the town. So, we're not required to do our...
Do you have a person that is doing, getting the permits and everything?
Getting the permits?
Do, do you have a person that, that is over the construction?
Greg Mars is the developer.
Do you trust him?
Do you know that we are required to have permits?
I, I don't know. He should, he should know.
Are we required to have a permit if you're doing it?
Yes. Do you, so do you have a municipal building?
Do you know that you're being...
I don't know. What I would say that the person we hired should know.
The person is on...
It's a person's level, but it's conditional use. You have to go through a class three hearing if we're...
Hey, if we have to do it, we'll do it.
So, I would say that before it works permits, that we follow the actual rules and go through zoning. If we're gonna do it right, we're just letting all our department, then let's do it right.
I'm gonna give you a sign. Look at the word "irony."
I would agree with you, John. But if you're like correctly recently about doing it and then she does not do it right because we're the government or municipal, how's that any difference? I call that irony.
So, what I said was if she trusted the person we hired, so...
We trusted Greg before.
So, she would need to call him and find out.
Or we could call the county and ask the county why the town roof feels not required to have a permit when everybody else has. And why, so Brian Allen was coming into this, this room and he was asking not a permit, but just a guidance on his. And it was shot out of the way before he got here because he didn't need the zoning requirements, even though it was zoning. There was an email back to the board.
I had, nobody here had anything to do with that.
They did too, because it was coming from Virginia Tito, actually, in the town board, what the vote was going to be already. Rob, so you can find information on zoning, that if you're dressed about it, with your his, his petition to come in and talk to the board, because we had recently decided outside of the vehicle what that was going to look like. So, my thing is, and I know what the zoning says, because it says that that type of buildings is permitted in the state of Virginia, within this area with a class three hearing before a permit can be issued. My question to you, since you're the one who's been dealing with this since December, since January, is that why is it okay that we have not looked through the process when you personally condemned the process and I believe you're the one who started the process to refuse permit? Because you're the one who connected the state, took pictures, provided it to the state.
I think I'm a little confused. The, the only thing the town does when we approve permits is make sure setbacks are ready to go. We don't do zoning.
We don't do...
That the county, that's what they, they don't get approved of though.
Well, how do they approve it? Because the first requirement is that they get the town to do it. If I do a whole work for a lot of my buildings...
If you wanna talk to the building inspector that approved it, by all means, call them.
I just wanna know, uh...
They are, they're...
That the, the town is waiting on the building permits because we made our own.
We didn't wait anything.
I'm telling you that we are, because we were supposed to do it.
Could you...
And now it's your house.
Could you possibly call the county's building inspector and...
I just wanna know why they don't...
I don't know. The county inspector approved it. I, I don't know.
Are you okay with us not to do a building permit?
I'm okay with the county approving our building permits so we can start...
Even the three board members tonight said it's required, you have a building permit.
I would like the three board members that required it to call the county building inspector and find out why. I, I don't know. He approved it. Here, he's the one that shut, shut, shut it down. I don't know. Is anyone willing to call him and find out?
Yeah, I'd like to know how it's possible that...
Great. Thank you for volunteering for that.
And then I would also, um...
And then if we're required to do something, we'll fit out of that.
We're required to have a class three hearing because it's conditional use for this, for government's facility or town building.
I, I'd like to see what the county building inspector tells us what we're supposed to do.
And I would like, if they're not required, that's not required, I guess, we're supposed to go through the process. If they're, if we're not going to require ourselves to go through the process.
If you could get some information...
Then we'll take it up when it happens. If, if, when you find out, report back to the board.
So, earlier, everybody's okay with like, we can get the right legal information that happened years ago. Are you...
That's what we, we just said, we want to get more information to make decisions on stuff.
Are you trying to have your, just, you know...
I'm just, I'm just trying to, I'm just trying to say, it's, it's been lovely not having articles written, because you two are relatively controlled, you don't say anything about it, but it's okay.
I'm not, I'm not, please don't say that, I don't say anything every day.
You are outdoors.
I, I have to see, since we're all discussing right now, I have to see many calls from council citizens, taxpayers of this town, who we answer to. Uh, why these meetings have been on our show.
Would you mind if we tabled that until we got through the business at the end?
Sure. I'm willing to leave for this.
Okay. The next is the engineering contract for State Road 101, second bid. Do we have the second bid yet?
I have not seen one yet.
Okay. Can we just move that to the next agenda? Uh, next is the Franklin County Girl Softball Association Building Permit 985 that we, I believe we tabled at the last meeting. Um, because they need a COA. And now that we don't need a COA, well, would anyone like to make a motion to approve this?
I made a motion to approve.
John made a motion to add on to the shelter at the town park. Put on the video description, he's directly... To remove the white shed and add an wood shelter with incorporated storage on the end, concrete new metal roof on the entire structure, new and existing. Uh, is there a second?
I'll say it.
Just a second in all favor? All opposed? Opposed?
Yeah, I think it's unfair that we're voting on one municipal building and you're just passing it through, so you're giving diverse opinions. You're not having statements on this thing?
Four approved, one not. Motion passed.
I think they're all over the place on this. This has taken time, which is like the other one.
Next is the BPD laptop quote.
So, I'm assuming, I just received this updated quote. They dated it under the $10,000 mark for the budget. I think from what I can tell, between the different laptops, um, their eight, nine is the 10. Also, the Office 365 subscriptions have been included. I think that was the difference.
I believe so. So, um, one of the things that Chief Metchum said during the last meeting is that he thought he had three or four laptops in their patrol cars. And unfortunately, we don't, haven't been able to see those or what they look like. So, Ramsey estimated, without seeing them, that they were all bought in 2017. Gina, did you give him any information about that or do you know how he came up with that number? Or that year? Or, do you know anything about that?
I know he went to the PD, so I don't know if whoever talked to her gave him...
He said that they were in their cars and he wasn't able to look at them. So, we don't know. Okay. So, anyway, at the last meeting, this was tabled because he spent more than the $10,000 budgeted last year. Because the original quote was, um, was, uh, it's like 15, 961, so close to $16,000. And that was for 10 laptops and Office 365. So, the next quote is nine with no Office 365, which means they won't be able to use it for like Word or anything like that. And, um, and we, we still don't know what the, what the condition is of the three or four that he said that were in their cars. So, I just, so I guess we need to vote on this quote.
Which quote is that?
So, this is the, so this quote is for $9,990. And that's for nine laptops with, and, and nine car power adapters and the setup. Uh, what he's gonna do is, I think what this setup includes, if I'm not mistaken, is, no, he's not gonna move any of their ENS. Okay. So, that's what that is.
Again, it's probably the matter, was any of them...
Yes.
$10,000.
$10,000?
Yeah.
But if we don't do the office, it's gonna spur the hamper.
Yes. In my, in my opinion, I, I believe the officers need the Office 365 on these computers. Uh, something that's happening in the tech world is that normally people have servers that backup all their data and they also use servers to share data that are on the same network, share information and share files, which is extremely important to the police department, to be able to share information. And Office 365 would give them that ability, that it's called SharePoint, it's still giving that same ability to be able to share files with each other, which they absolutely have to have. And, um, and then when the server, uh, goes bad, uh, we won't replace that. A lot of companies are just going away from servers and they're just going to the cloud, which that 365, Microsoft 365 is a cloud service. And Ramsey said it, he thinks it's the best for our people. And I think Gina just kind of was looking into doing that for more of them so we can share information. So, I mean, if, if we get it for Gina, she, she'd be able to share all this on a SharePoint that we could all access and there wouldn't be like a million emails going back and forth. It's just, it's very, it increases production for what we're doing.
Terry's, Terry's opinion of this is that it was not my opinion, it was your request to Ramsey and that's what, after the last meeting. It was not the biggest part of saying, did I request the Microsoft 365?
Yes.
Or did Ramsey suggest it to you?
No.
That, that you had requested Microsoft 365 and you had it on to it.
No, that is incorrect statement, that is, that is not correct.
But at least how Chief Metchum has portrayed it to me is that he didn't need Microsoft 365.
That is, that is, that is incorrect. I never had anything, I, we had a conversation with Ramsey about the benefits of Microsoft 365.
You had...
May I please finish?
You, or you said me.
I think I was speaking there too that day with the initials.
Jess.
Okay.
We talked about...
I think Jess was there also.
We talked about technology and what his opinion of how, if we're not doing, if we're doing something wrong or if we need to improve something so that we have good service to the public. And one of the things that he brought up was Microsoft 365. He said it's all the things I've already said and I was like, okay, I really don't know anything about it. And that was the end of the conversation, besides him saying, I'll have conversations with each one of the employees to find out what they do and their job, to see if they would be a good candidate for it or they don't need it at all. I never said to him that the police department needs Microsoft 365 ever. I saw this quote just like everybody else did. Um, I never said that, so please...
I'm just saying, Terry said, I didn't say it exists.
Please don't say, I didn't say that. But...
This, this, he referred that he said he's not needing Microsoft 365.
Again, I disagree. If these officers use these laptops in their cars and they're taking notes for different scenes, different whatever they, investigations, it would be so much easier for them to type on their computer in their car and print it out in their printer in their car and be able to share that information on the scene. I think it's better public support. And I think if they go to training and they take their laptop with them instead of a notebook and a pencil, they're, you know, at least in the 21st century with the rest of us, while the other officers are in training with their laptops, our officers are sitting there with a notebook and a, and a pencil. Um, I think it would be very beneficial for them to have Microsoft 365, especially so they could share their files with each other in, in their cars on scene instead of just when they go back to the, um, office.
It is my understanding that now in the county, that when somebody writes you a trash receipt, it's not all in paper anymore. They send it. I would just imagine they might need office to do that. I don't know, but I would think that would be one of the tools involved. We just got on radar. I would think we would need other tools.
I'm just, I'm just relying on what the board has said, that he does need to release laptops, so that's all I can go for. But I'm not, I'm just talking. If he needs it, he can come back in the future and request it, but if he doesn't request it as a need, then I don't have a reason to, so I'm not gonna say he needs it.
I know, I talked to Terry last weekend, this is one of the subjects we talked about, and he did specify that he does not need Office 365. He said the computers they use have different programs in them, they do not need that.
He did say that the board wants to spend an extra $5,000. Now, if they keep taking Office 365, he probably not gonna use it. So, that's up to us, we want a budget, an extra $5,000.
Right. The budget is 10 grand, correct? So, with 365, it's 15, 961, so it's six grand over his budget, what he's been holding against 10.
I'm fine, I'm here too. If that's what he didn't want, I'm fine. I'm not gonna shiver anything down either.
Well, then, I agree with you too, but if, if you're willing to just spend 10 grand, that's all we got to spend, what, what's he supposed to do?
We've clearly, there's no, I mean, this board has voted to spend all kinds of stuff that's not on the budget tonight. And Gina has said she can find any somewhere, we can do additional preparation, so...
So, you're willing to be able... Now, I, I did just apologize, but, uh, the general...
I'm just, I'm just saying...
I make a motion that we accept the quote that Terry gave us.
For, hold on, for 91. John made a motion to approve the quote for $9,990 for nine laptops and nine car power adapters and a setup fee of $990. Is there a second?
I said it.
Heard a second. All in favor? All opposed? Motion passed? One opposed. The next one of this is the BPD equipment inventory, I think we already discussed that, so I'll just keep and stretch it off. Next is the 4.5 mile Ready Grand Sewer Project. I don't really have anything for that. I, I, Bill Sherman mentioned that he is going to talk to Nick Lawrence to try to help, um, develop a, probably not gonna say this right, a, oh, an RFP, uh, so that we can, for, for our approval to put it in the paper and start getting bids. So, he's under contract with, with them on that. And we have gotten several surveys back as well. So, there's that. Next is the placement of old security camera plan. Um, do we have any update on that from Chief Metchum?
I do not, as of today.
Okay. If we can just put that on the next agenda?
Okay.
Thank you. Uh, next are the monthly reports from all the department heads. Would any council member like to highlight any of the department heads or anything that they're doing that's good, bad, or ugly? Or make any comments about the monthly reports?
You know how I feel with monthly reports.
I meant the content of them, Chuck.
How I feel...
The con, the content, what's in them. Do you wanna...
It should be left in the report. That's my feeling.
If you want to discuss that, can you please put it on the agenda for next month? This is just a...
You're suggesting that?
It's, it's the content of the report. Would you...
Monthly reports is all it says.
It's the content of, look at the, the monthly reports that they send in.
Okay, so I don't believe, I got a comment? Yeah, I didn't have a word.
I just wondered if anybody had a comment or wanted to highlight anything to the public?
I'm happy with what the Gulf Coast is bringing in so far.
Would anyone else like to highlight anything? Next is owner occupied grants. Okay, I'll just go off of, oh, yes. So, there is such a thing called, one of the things that the, all these public meetings have said is that, uh, what are we doing to help the residents with their renovations of their houses? And so, I, I found out about an owner occupied housing grant and I reached out to SARPC because they had information about it. And, um, the woman that I talked to said that, um, there is such a thing, it's called, it's called the housing preservation grant through the USDA. And it's something that SARPC applies for every year. And every year they rotate the recipients from all the, I think it's seven counties that they administer to. And Franklin County was a recipient, I think last year or maybe the year before. And they were able to help seven families in Franklin County, anywhere from $10,000 to $15,000 for renovations in their house. And they spent a total of, or they got a grant for a total of $127,000. So, this year, SARPC is, did submit a grant, but they did it on behalf of DeWong County and Swisman County. And, um, since I reached out to her, she said, hey, what I'll do is I'll submit this grant for Brookfield next year. And that application comes open anywhere from February to June, and it's a 30-day turnaround time. And what happens is the money goes directly to SARPC and they are the ones to distribute it out, so it wouldn't come through Gina at all. And, um, there's no matching money involved. And, uh, the requirements are that the person has to be below 80% of the area median income. And when she did this last year, uh, the, it was if you were one person and you owned your house and you made less than $43,000, you could qualify. And if you were two people in your house and you made less than $49,000, you could qualify. And there's a bunch of other requirements, like you have to be current with everything. It only applies to like a new roof, furnace, air conditioning, plumbing, and electric. Uh, but if the board so decides that this is something that we would be interested in, then she would come at the beginning of the year, do a little talk and kind of explain all the details to us if you're interested in doing this.
So, to me, it sounds like something that is good for the citizens of the town, but in my opinion, they're gonna be getting grant money or eligible for it to help remodel, replace a roof, furnace, air conditioning. So, is there any cost involved in the town for participating in this?
No.
No cost to the town.
That I know of. Hopefully she comes next year and you ask that, that'd be for sure, but from what I understand, no. But, yeah.
It's good.
So, you guys agree, I'll just tell her to, yeah, we're good to go and come at the beginning of the year? If, if, if they give the grant money out and all that, that's all right? No? Next is DISG Off Project Update. Is he able to be here?
He wasn't, but he can come to the next meeting.
Great.
Is there a specific question I can maybe try to answer?
No, that's just to update the new people on what the project is. If you just move to the next agenda, I'll be great.
Sure.
Thanks. Next one, I assume the Girl Softball aren't here either?
That was my bad. I thought she was gonna have to get a COA and then come, but we didn't provide a permit, so...
If we just push it to the next one, see if she's available?
Yep.
Thanks. Next is the dumping ordinance.
So, Brent has sent out that compost sign because there are people who are not allowed to be dumping down the compost. And that he is saying that the compost has been doubled in years, almost to the point we may have to grind twice a year instead of just one. He would like to police that. And I believe he sent an email to everybody, I'm sorry, I didn't print that off. Um, my question to Lynn was, do we have to have an ordinance to enforce a fine if they are in that, in violation? So, what do you guys want? And then she also mentioned a statute, a literary statute. So, I'm not sure if code enforcement wants to do, go by statute or develop an ordinance for the fine.
I, from what I remember reading, actually, she took it that, or she told us that we could come up with an ordinance if we wanted, or we could use an existing literary fine that is already in place. I think the, if I remember right, it was a fine, $500 maybe? If, if it was...
Yeah, I don't know, so...
But if it could be considered literary, say, just keep it, keep an eye on it. Wasn't the cameras mentioned pointing in another direction that...
Right. So, um, I think Brent had said that there's an electric pole there with electric, that he wanted to post a camera there to get a, a better view. Um, I think he talked to Chief Metchum about that. So, I'm assuming maybe that's part of that plan, that they were supposed to, for the security cameras, the old security cameras, so that might be part of it, because I think we were talking about that.
Yeah. Yeah, 'cause I, I do remember something, but I can't remember if I read license plates or pretty much, thus I can't read your license plate. So, we're going to do ordinance, is that, is that all we're up against right now?
Well, this is for the board to discuss. What is the, what is the board gonna do? What does anybody else want to do? Any opinions?
We gotta leave mine.
I mean, if we don't have any other opinions, we'll just move on?
Like, did you say there was something already in place though? I think there's a literary ordinance for statewide literary law. I believe they'll cover it.
Said let's use the statewide and just print out, then we modify the local ordinance to...
Yeah. Still with the camera up, I think he's wanting a sign for down there, correct?
I'm gonna go, should we do a sign of the camera, like, to use the state literary court, literary code as the fine statute?
I think we need to look at the sign to make sure that it's in line with the state law and what the literary dollar, I thought that sign had a dollar on it or something?
Yeah.
Before we could, I don't have the sign from either, I didn't print that out.
I'm sure it is, the fine.
I thought, I thought it said something about the dollar amount for the fine.
I don't think the sign that he was going for that has a dollar sign, or a dollar...
Oh, I'm sorry, that's what, I thought it did. So, I don't remember. Okay. So, the motion is to use the Indiana state law and approve the sign, and I don't know what you mean, approve the cameras, what do you mean? Do you wanna, do you have a quote or something, or...
So, Brent, uh, I, Brent wanted to get a camera to put down lower where the dumping occurs. I haven't asked him what he, how he wants it, if he wants to get a quote or what he's planning on doing.
Okay. Because we have to all cameras on police department that are being used, so...
I think maybe... I think maybe that he had talked to Chief Mission about that, but I'm one hundred percent sure. I'd have to find out again.
So the motion is to approve a camera, but how do you, can you be more, more specific with the camera part?
I'd say that if he wants to use, have the interior work out, give it to one for him or buy a new and up to whatever. Thousand dollars, you know. And he has, he has ability to spend three thousand dollars without asking, so whatever he wants to spend on a camera.
Okay, so we don't want to tell him to use one of the cameras from the police department? We want to give him the authority to buy a brand new camera?
Unless you work out with the interior to get it.
So.
Very logical.
Motion is on the table to, to just use the state law for the dumping and to approve the sign that he already submitted and to approve up to a thousand dollars for a new camera. Is there a second?
I'll say.
Earl seconded, all in favor? All opposed? Two opposed, motion passed. He can buy a camera that he'd like.
Five hundred dollar amount on the sign.
I think the state, state limit had a five hundred dollar fine.
But it didn't ask for the big part of the sign.
Next topic is the Sintas contract.
Actually, I have the street department sign, the last meeting, I think that drawing that Brent had submitted, Curse was unsure if it met the sign code. And when I got an email back from Tim, in his opinion, it's, the street department sign is okay. It's something that, and it's left up to four colors. I think he highlighted that code.
So just to answer to your question, right? We don't need to load on to the end.
No, we've already approved the concept.
Great.
And I'm assuming I don't have to go COA.
Sorry, next is the Sintas contract.
So the department has, in talking with Tim and Brent, I wanted to see if they wanted to update some of their uniforms at Hydes. They have picked an option. So I am asking to read the contract with the items above. Some people wear cargo pants, some people don't, some people buy their own pants. I think the year, two years past, we had an employee, we've done reimbursement to purchase their own pants because they didn't fit. So I would like to continue that as well. It's a lot cheaper than if we went and had them wash them. The work shirts that they currently wear, the sewer department, wastewater department will still continue to wear those. And then the street department and the water department, they will start wearing the Hydes, mostly short shirts. And this is the one, your contract.
So the contract has, with Sintas cargo pants at point eighty-seven, eighty-seven and a half cents. Work shirt, eight, point eight seven eight. Cargo jean, one point one one three and some kind of T-shirt.
That is a Hydes, so. That's a Hydes, and it's a little more expensive.
One point oh two. Service charge is eleven twenty-four per delivery. Any motion to approve?
I made a motion to approve.
John made a motion to approve the Sintas contract. Any, is there a second?
I'll say.
Earl seconded, all in favor? All opposed, motion passed. Next is HWC engineering monocoil contract addendum.
So we've been contracting with HWC to stay in compliance with our PAM update. This is basically a ten thousand dollar on-call contract. So anytime they update our paving asset management plan or do work towards our community crossing rates applications, it's billed hourly from this amount. So this would be an addendum, so it would just be, we're dealing with ten thousand dollars.
Is there a motion to approve the contract?
I made a motion to approve the contract.
John made a motion to approve the HWC engineering contract for not to exceed ten thousand dollars.
I'll say.
Curtis seconded, all in favor? All opposed, motion passed. Next is wastewater South Rush quote. So today, the South Rush went down?
I think it was two days ago.
Okay, thanks. Two days. This quote was, is for, I think, yes, bearings. This is four thousand three hundred ninety plus four thousand seven hundred forty-five plus seven thousand three hundred fifty to replace the bearings on the south South Rush. This does not include the other thing that costs thirty thousand dollars. I can't remember the name of that thing.
The gearbox, I think.
Thank you, the gearbox for approximately thirty thousand dollars. We don't have a quote for that yet. This is just to replace the bearings. I think this is legitimate, legitimate thing we have to do.
Do we need to approve it?
Yes, we need a motion to.
You made a motion to approve that.
John made a motion to approve the quote from Lakeside Equipment Corporation for, you know, fifteen, sixteen, about sixteen thousand dollars that I read earlier. Is there a second?
I'll say.
Curtis seconded, all in favor? All opposed, motion passed. Next is the Franklin County Youth Football Raffle Letter for the Game License. This is their normal annual letter that they send. Brookville Town Council has granted permission to the Franklin County Youth Football Organization of Brookville, Indiana to hold weekly drawings of their annual raffle at the youth football facility located in the Brookville Town Park at nine fifty Mill Street. The first drawing will take place on Wednesday, January third, twenty twenty-four, and continue on each Wednesday throughout the year. The final drawing will be on Wednesday, December twenty-fifth, twenty twenty-four. It is understood that the town of Brookville and the members of the Brookville Town Council are in no way involved with the operation of this raffle and therefore, and therefore will receive no compensation for the permission to use the facility sincerely. Bridgette Hayes. Can I get a motion to approve this in the silence letter?
I made a motion to approve.
Chuck made a motion to approve the city charter letter for the Franklin County Youth Football Raffle. Is there a second?
I'll say.
Earl seconded, all in favor? All opposed, motion passed. Next is State Design Release Application for Street Department Salt. So we don't have drawings.
I'm sorry, I think I emailed this, Brent and Michael emailed this separately. I didn't include him with this.
That's okay.
He just received this this morning. The draw, I think he was happy with the drawings, so they're ready to submit those design release to approve the draft.
This is cause for electrical foundation, structural and architectural changes and the construction of the new salt, not dome, salt building. I think it's going to be like two, with two garage doors on the front of it. This is to hold, the salt, the salt is currently being held in the, in the new PD Town Hall building. And this is funded, I think, part of the sale of the old street department.
I made a motion to approve.
John made a motion to approve the application for construction design release for the state of Indiana. Is there a second?
I'll say.
Chuck seconded, all in favor? All opposed? Motion carried? Sale of police department.
Yes, so the police department is currently being used on Main Street. I feel that the town will benefit from owning it after we get the facilities moved to the new investment building. And I would like the city to put up a show. And proceeds set aside for a safety fund, will you ever have a safety fund?
A what?
Only add to the safety fund.
What's a safety? Oh, public safety.
So, and, yeah. Totally good. What we're sitting there, it's going to be costing us money here eventually.
So, yeah, Roger that. So I, one of the things that I went to a Rushville Main Street event. They talked about what Rushville has been doing and how great they've, all the things they've been doing. One of the things that kind of got my attention was that they also fell onto a building on their main street. I don't think they like went out to purchase it, but something happened, they bought it. Excuse me, and they owned it. And what they used it for was for, to help people start up businesses and like charged them like very little rent or no rent or something. And their, their concept was to let them use the building to start up their business and see if they could make it, make a go of it without having to incur rent for like, I don't know, three, six, I don't know what their agreement is. And it, and what they said is it kind of helps spur small businesses. It really helps them out to kind of start it up because you don't want to start a business and start paying rent, sign a contract if your business doesn't go. But if you can put it in one of the town and building for three or four, five months and then get it going and then move on to another building, it, it just was something that they, they did try to help these people with all these great ideas to spur their, to spur more small business efforts. So I thought it was a good idea. They also, they, they showed us a building where they had axe family in it. And what they told the owners is you can have the building, but you have to, I think it's called white boxing it or. So they redid all the walls and made it all so it's nice. And then they just put their axe throw in each room or a couple rooms, really it was a small building. And then they take all their stuff off, the next person can also use it because it's kind of like common stuff, it's not really unique to them. It's stuff that they can remove, it's not permanent changes to the building so that it, it can have to be used by the next person. So I was hoping that we would be able to do something like that for the police department. But I would hate to make any decision at this point because we, we don't even know when our building is going to be renovated. But I thought it was a good idea to, to try and help the people out there that, you know, don't have enough startup.
The biggest difference between Rushville and Brookville is that Rushville was doing all after the redevelopment. They were capturing TIF money and then using redevelopment money, redevelopment to procure private properties and to fix some abusing TIF and then give them back on tax payroll. It's cinemaism that. You can't do that through a public body because you have to go through the public leasing or the public disposition, which we already started by previous order to the prison of my bullets. So even if you wanted to do that, or if you wanted to, unless you transfer as a redevelopment, in which case you would still have to follow the public disposition. So if you wanted to do that through pre-bank, I think that would be fine. But to do that through towns, money sounds a little bit like socialism than it does capitalism. And that's just money. I also agree with Chuck that the, we, you said the salt dome, we sold the, the previous street department and we used that money to provide them with new equipment. We did the salt dome plus provided some other equipment for them previously. I'll be supportive of selling the police department and using that money to fund the police department since we have had numerous conversations over an hour long day of issues where the police do not have proper equipment and they're coming to the building and even before the UAS were onboard, that, that building needed additional equipment in it. That was not part of the scope product, very large hat. So we sell the link, we'll have cash to give the police department. I think that's fair.
I agree. Police department building, they'll sell it. The funds should go to fund the police department.
I really don't think we need to make a decision tonight. It's another example of something's tried up and we go with it without really taking a look. I think Bridgette ought to have time to look and see what exactly she has to do, the town has to do if they want to do what Bridgette wants to do. We've got a lot of empty storefronts on Main Street. I hope that we fill them up. And this is a way that we can fill them up if the small business could start there and the adults in this socialism could start there and then move to another building that's empty and could start paying rent on it.
What funds would we use to fix this up? The building has mold problems, it has water, children problems, it has.
It's something we can discuss as it goes along. If it does work, we can always sell it.
We're good with not funding the police department, we're good with repairing buildings to.
We can, we can always sell it if we have to. We don't have to make this decision tonight. What I'm saying is no more knee jerk reaction. Let's, let's discuss our options.
It hasn't been a knee jerk reaction because we started this over a year and a half ago and we, we figured the, the phrase was just far from a knee jerk reaction. And we spent the majority of this meeting and last meeting discussing the needs of the police department with no options to fund another takeout general or reappropriately. This is a viable option to, to fund the police department.
Just to put it back, everything that the police department wanted has been approved. So I'm not sure if you're comfortable about not funding the police department. It's been, everything's been approved tonight, so.
It's been, it's been a fight all night and all last week together.
But the end result of this day, everything's been funded. I just wanted to check that.
And that's not how fun the future is because they do or are they gonna be more set to do it?
Well, sure is. Yeah, of course you're for.
Well, this is the first time we've actually brought this up. Is, is there any way that we could have some time to think about this and think about this? I mean, do you want to hit it up for sale tomorrow or, you know, I mean, it'd just be, if we could just have some more time to think about, to make sure.
You can always sell the building without getting a possession. If you're seller, you're in control, you negotiate your possession. So you can sell a building, get all the stuff they need to finish out the building at any time. Because it's going to, it's already in it. You know, if you're available, we started that process, it's only going to begin.
This is the first time that this board has reviewed this.
And I'm saying that the terrorist requests of things that he's going to need, that building are going to come up. And we're going to be in the same position, however, do we find him or do not find him? This is the chance to do that. That's all we're saying.
And the request was to put it in a safety fund for the police.
Correct.
Oh, this is terrorist request to sell, sell the building or get it in the money for him?
But it's chess.
That was chess, I'm sorry, that was a terrorist. My bad.
That's anyone there.
Is there any reason personally that you want this for sale real quickly?
I think based on the conversation we had last week and based off of the terrorist conversations that he's had with me and the needs that he has in this state, we're either going to be anti-police and not find him or we're going to find him.
Again, we can wait on this, look at all the options. Because this council is the first time I'm here. And then do whatever we want to do. We don't have to do something tonight.
We don't have to, we just, it is. So I'm going to try to speak on this.
Did you, did you put a motion, did you make a motion? I'm sorry, did, did you make a motion?
No, I just made a statement.
Would you like to make? Would anyone like to make a motion regarding this topic? Okay, we're gonna move on then. Oh, we're done. Does anybody, so I just have a couple things.
I, I would like this to be taken until, until the next meeting.
Okay, put it on the agenda for the next meeting?
Yes.
Is that okay with everybody to put it on the next meeting? Sorry. So just, I'm sure no one's listening anymore. There's people out there. Just a little insight into the one-way issue on Main Street. We asked a little problem with, this project has been ongoing since twenty twenty. Uh, we asked a little problem with, um, this project has been ongoing since, uh, 2021. Didn't I already talk about this?
Mm-hmm, yes.
I did?
Yes.
I said all this?
Yes. At last meeting. You didn't.
No.
Your phone was.
She talked about it earlier. Sure, go on.
Okay. Anyways, been ongoing since 2021 and what we found out, um, I guess yesterday.
Yeah.
That, um.
I had to be standing beside you when you left, girl.
Thank you for that, yes. Uh, the statement.
It seemed like we were at private meetings somewhere.
We were in private meetings.
We were outside.
Okay, anyway, so, uh, Inda got back with us and they, they, I, I called them because I was concerned that it was not safe. Uh, I, I was very concerned because I didn't think there was enough signs out to say where the runway was on both entrances. So, I called them and I was like, hey, I'm concerned about the safety here. So, he, he looked at the permit and, uh, he and his team decided that, his name is Damon Brown from Inda, decided that, uh, the state actually approved the design, um, incorrectly. And some of the comments from the statement, uh, people didn't get back to the designer and how did it be approved, um, without all the right stuff? And so, they are taking steps now, Inda is to fix it, to put up additional signs. Um, he said there were several signs missing from the design things, including runway enter, overhead lane, assignment signs like left only. Um, and he was thankful that Brian put up those temporary signs, um, to try to, um, control traffic a little better. And, um, he is going to, um, get back with us to tell us what policy he's gonna try to do to make sure that, um, our citizens have their state going back in our runway. So, there's some barriers up, um, right now, kind of everything in the bank. Uh, because when we come out of there, you have to go across the lane and out of the lane now. So, I just want to update you guys on the runway. Um.
He, he mentioned something about overhead signals, is that correct?
I'm sorry, that's right, thank you. Um, somebody got the timing and the overhead signals was wrong and I, I'm pretty sure I saw him today out there messing with the timing.
Yeah.
So, I think that is not going to be a surprise.
It's not happening.
And I think that's all I have. Does anybody want to add anything else?
I have a couple things.
Okay.
Two other boardrooms want to consent, can I add anything to the agenda?
What was the topic again on table?
What was the topic is to, uh, remove the monthly report requirements.
Okay, um, can I just want to add a topic of removing monthly report requirements? I guess that, that's a motion?
I would add a motion to remove the monthly report requirements for mandatory to volunteer effective next month or immediately.
Uh, is there a second?
I'm sorry. Now, this is putting it on the agenda.
Yes, so this is putting it on the agenda so we can talk about it tonight. Okay, so you said, uh.
Did he make a motion?
He made a motion, you said he made it.
Yeah.
All in favor of putting, of talking about this tonight and putting it on the agenda? All opposed? Motion carried. Go ahead, removing monthly reports.
So, I'd like to make a motion to remove the monthly report requirements for mandatory to volunteer effective immediately.
What, what's the reason for this?
It's an extra burden on the, um, department heads.
It's.
It's not, it's not very compliant, um.
All, most of them.
Yes.
Most of them see as a redundancy, especially because the people in New York are doing it often, um, sometimes daily. Um, in her case, so you should know what they're doing anyways. Um, it's worked for years without this requirement. Um, it's additional busy work, you know, I hope that it's a, a good use of their time against requirements.
So, you knew that, how do you know how much money the golf course is making around here? I mean, I don't, the public has asked repeatedly what's going on with the golf course repeatedly. And so, this monthly report is a public record, they can ask for it. I mean, uh, the Brookfield Golf Club, nobody, nobody wanted to read this aloud to let the public know, even though they asked for it a lot. Um, so far, they've been handing out $10,000 and $0.96, they have 94 members. Uh, they have a new league in, they have a list of all the events that are coming up for all the, uh, you know, Saturday events. I mean, and telling us what they're doing, they're, they're doing wonderful work. How, how would we all know of this, the ones that submitted this to us? I think it's, it's great.
Actually, our department has to do the job they're required to do.
Actually, us too, but giving them.
They're not supposed to do that, and we'll provide direct actions for that, but it's still, I think this is redundancy, that's, that's my command of the job.
This is meant to be, to tell the public what services that they are getting for their tax dollars. They are doing great things, I want to make sure that our employees, the citizens know what, what, what they're doing and how great things are going.
I agree, there are no great things, as some people might have mentioned to your.
It's not a high relation, it's a, it's a non-patriot court. It's something that professional people provide to their court, they're saying, what have you done? You're a first-time reporter. It's, it's, it's a step a level up to more professionals and for the people that care about whether their tax, they don't know where their tax dollars are going unless we tell them. This is something that I see that. This is a basic thing and I.
I don't think they recommend him on any of the monthly reports.
I'm just worried about the future of the man starting to be intended down in the monthly reports.
What do you remember it from what?
I just, I just have concerns that, um, there, these reports will be used to penalize the department heads in the future.
Tell us and how, it's telling us what, I mean.
I don't know the.
Tell me if it was telling us about bearing plates and some brushes and sludge presses. It's very, it's wonderful.
I'm here to advocate on behalf of our department heads who have express concerns to me regarding their opinions of their courts, the liaisons, we live in the liaisons. I would assume that the, uh, monthly reports wasn't part of that, but because it was written, so I'm adding it on there. Yeah. That's just my concern that this was, this was a big thing that was possibly intended, um, that has been taken a step too far and could be taken.
What, what do you, please say this one is a step too far, what, what recommends these are all.
Uh, yeah, there's, they're, they're. And they're, which right now is saying that it could be used in the future.
Well, they're using it in the future incorrectly.
Will be gross.
I just want to nip it up before it gets to that point.
You're just trying to stop, you're looking for solutions, don't know what you don't have.
Not yet, that's the problem that you are receiving as a department.
Doesn't the public want to know that the fire, the fire department on 24 months in April? They're doing two training sessions in their, uh, fire department in God Valley, it's June 3rd. Don't they want to know about that?
How people have a public record for us or any of these reports?
Uh, this is only the second one.
How many, two months have you done, anyway?
None.
So, no, they, they aren't personally interested in how many, what's the issue, see if the market's just out there on this fire or that. And that's what I.
So, they don't, they don't care that our police department is making any arrests or doing anything?
They want to leave, when they make trouble, they want the police to be funded properly and have the equipment that they need.
They don't care about whether they're answering, because they ask questions of the court.
We now have, but I don't think that they want to know that there's a report that they can read. They want to see that the police department community making a presence, and that's what we have.
I thought you were all transparent. Is that meant every now and then, or?
I never, I think that's the serious thing.
Well, we hear it every evening.
I was, well, we just heard the numbers just now for the first time, the public has tonight. Uh, what you just said, the numbers don't read earlier.
Uh, I asked everybody if you wanted to highlight anything and everybody said no.
No, I'm talking about the reports.
I know. I asked, I asked you guys, did anybody want to highlight anything about the reports? Nobody said anything.
And anyone from the public did hear?
You all want to hear?
No, I'm just saying that, I hear the courage in monthly reports. We, we were kind of punishing, in my opinion, our department heads that do not want to do them. Curtis' motion was if they want to voluntarily do them, that's fine. If they don't want to do them, then that should be fine as well. We oversee the department heads, the department heads are hired, and it's a trust issue.
It, it's, it, this is not a trust issue, this is, this is accountability. This is accountability, taxpayer dollars. We are making sure that they are doing what they're supposed to, well, not really, but I want to highlight the great things that they're doing, and that's the point, that they're accountable to the taxpayers, to us. I do trust them to do what their job is, but there are a lot of towns and cities that require the department heads to physically come and make a report in person. This is simply one step above doing nothing, which is just letting us know what's going on. It's, it's called situational awareness, you gotta know what's happening.
I would rather than be required to come talk to the board so that we all get information at the same time and have to write a report.
Read, fine, let's have them all come.
Or?
Perfect, I'm sure, if they had the choice, I'm sure they'll choose to do a report, but hey, that's fine with me too.
I don't think that that's necessarily true, I think that they would be happy to have this to the public. But they said, you know, if they have questions about what's on Main Street Department, they should, they should see our folks at the meeting. But I consider making a motion to stop monthly reporting, that's my motion, it's on the agenda.
A second.
Any other discussion?
A second.
Yeah, I got it, after seconds you had discussion, any other?
Waiting five over rounds.
Well, we do everything out of order, I have to call for discussion after the vote, after the second. No discussion, um, all clear. All opposed? Monthly reports are off the table. Motion passed, no monthly reports.
I'd like to add another thing to the agenda with consent.
What's the topic again?
Uh, to, uh, stop the, temporarily stop construction on the center building until we have clarity from the county regarding the, um, proper permitting process and the proper zoning process. To make sure that we're transparent with the public, gentlemen, and we're long for standing rules to go into this on it.
I'm okay with that.
So, I have, that was the motion.
Uh, is there a second on adding a motion to the agenda?
I'll second it.
All seconds, all clear, but adding to the agenda? Four, all opposed, one? Okay, stop construction on Center Building, on the new, new PD building.
If the county, if the county provide or written opinion that we're not required to have a town permit and we're not required to go through a class three hearing as a condition of these jobs, that building is a government center, county, government, municipal, um, or city, um, and it will commence construction immediately, if we are required, then we will go through the proper permitting process and zoning process.
Also.
Uh, would you mind telling us who's gonna do that?
I'll run it, can I be warned?
Okay. All in favor? All opposed? Okay, construction is now stopped on the new police department and Center Building and Curtis is going to, uh, research how that's, um, how, how long we're gonna be shut down. Any other topics you want to add to the agenda?
I will. It's to amend the rules procedure for the board.
Okay.
Say that again.
To amend the rules of procedure for the board.
Is there a second to?
I'll second that.
Chuck, uh, you're Chuck, Chuck's second on, I mean. All in favor of adding any rules procedures of the board to the agenda tonight? All opposed? Motion carried. All right.
I'd like to add, uh, a certain section on a removal of a president or vice president, as an acting officer or vice officer.
Read Indiana code.
We cover ourselves.
The Indiana code is for towns and counties also is type five Arca Lake in Beeton. And she has to commit an impeachment.
Sign impeachment of an officer, that's an impeachment of.
You take her out of office, that is the definition of impeachment. She will remove her as president, that is the definition of impeachment.
When we can, we can set her terms to president and provide question of date of employment.
Say that again.
And I'd like to make a motion that the removal of the president is set every six months.
Hold on, you're talking too fast, you made a motion.
To amend the rules procedure that the president and vice president hold, um, terrorists are limited to six months in office, so she has until she first.
Remove to six months. Okay, and then, well, we have to have another session on what we do after that.
And at that point, um, if there is a vote of no confidence in the president or vice president, then maybe we move by a vote of support.
Yeah, and then what, have your president?
The president provides, then the vice president assumes the role of president.
Vice assumes the role, okay.
Then the council will approve any vice president.
Okay, then you take another vote.
Correct. So, we will be impeaching her, we will just be moving her terms to six months.
Okay, so that's not removal of the president or vice president, but what I need to get to six months? Add section of president or vice president limited to six months.
Can you legally do that after she was appointed with the rules for for a year?
We changed, we changed it, we changed the rules of procedure to get her, because it was set to do that, and we changed it after that again, so he has to pay a place of change here.
Yeah, because those were, when the previous rules or procedures were for someone to be able to hold office, I know that had to be on.
And our rules procedure said we may amend it at any point in time.
That has changed. At, at the first meeting of the year.
It was changed the first day, the rules were revoked at first meeting. The rules procedure weren't approved until.
After.
Come up February, March meeting, something like that.
Okay.
And it says we can amend and suspend the rules procedure anytime of the majority of the board. And so, I'm voting to amend this off of the comments we're submitting.
Any other discussion of that?
Yeah, um, so as you know, I had, uh, I believe I was the one that did nominate you for president. Not a hundred percent sure, but I think I did. And, uh, the word force, I have received from the public and employees too of the town have not been going very well, and it has gotten to where it is at the point of it can be considered hostile work environment.
Have you ever bossed up to me outside of just now?
No. I don't know if we have.
You, you guys keep following the radical term hostile work environment. We've got two lawsuits against us right now, how many more do you want? You shouldn't throw those terms around.
That's why we're addressing it, that's.
All right. We're, we're addressing it now that there are urban authorities who are such an hostile work environment.
Curtis, have you ever talked to me about this outside of the building?
Has your appropriate talked to you about hostile work environment?
Yes.
Or is it great before the board and have a conversation, that's not.
As, as a, as a fellow human being, yes.
No.
Yes. To, if you, if you, if you did complain about somewhere, so you don't take it public and then expect a lot and you talk to them and say, hey, what's going on? This is the one here, and hey, you might want to correct your behavior. Can you give the person a chance to correct their behavior?
You have three weeks now to correct your behavior, then you, I gave you, you know, I didn't say that. So, I gave you an opportunity, not to your people like you treated in the meeting, but like you treated everyone at the board members in meetings. Cutting them off.
Oh, we're not talking about fellow members, you said.
I'm saying that it's the same environment that you're opposing our employees. I have words personally from you, from the seat, you're disrespectful for the people that present. You're disrespectful for people that sit.
And is it appropriate to do this in a public meeting, to share?
And it's, it's appropriate to call me out or whatever you feel like, you don't like what I'm saying, then it's appropriate for me to call.
You're out of order and all the times I've called you out of order because you were out of.
Maybe three weeks, you can say that. And then unless there's a change, or you can change my opinion, or you can change my opinion, then.
You have no idea what the hell this opinion is.
I do.
You're an owner, you're saying, you're an owner, you're saying you're on it, and, no, no, you're not, no.
Uh, someone, someone told me about something that happened at the last meeting and I didn't catch it because I was reading Pickle at the time. And it came from you that you pretty much, uh, put me down, and it was aimed at me. You didn't, you didn't call me, and we're gonna accuse you of that. But you made a comment that you don't retain on this board until you are either removed or charged or found guilty of a felony. And you traveled and looked over at me and watched it on the video today and you did exactly what they told me you did. That is kind of disrespectful.
I know.
That's a lot disrespectful.
I'm not ordering in the context of that comment.
Please.
I don't remember the context of that comment.
I, I don't know what it was, what it was concerning, that it was after Terry had a talk and I didn't. and I didn't comment, I think it was one, I didn't comment, I didn't want anything to go on. For, for, that was pretty wild, out of context for me to say. And I should have been more careful with anything that went on. But then a little bit later, as I was reading some paperwork and it was actually the roles and responsibilities of our employees of the town, um, someone told me that you were a tank on this board and that you were removed.
Somebody told you to comment, so I didn't make it in a public meeting and I just said it in a public meeting?
You did make it in a public meeting, you already worked it out because I did watch the video this afternoon, or I put network on it, I probably did that first.
That's very good.
So if, if you do something like that to me and the fellow town members, town council members, and you turn this and you roll your eyes at us more, I watched you earlier, roll your eyes at what I was talking about, so.
What are you talking about? This is so inappropriate.
It's not inappropriate.
Can we, wait, did you make a motion? Is there a second to add a session, a manual?
Yeah. She is an accountant, she heard a small shady area building, but, okay.
I'm just trying to do the meeting in a long chat because it's 10 till 10 at night and you guys have discussed, as you've made it known, I think you've made your point and I just wanted to get it to the second vote or the, the whole vote. So I'm just trying to do things.
It's all screwed on.
Um, so Curtis made a motion to amend the rules of procedure and add a session to limit the president or vice president term, term to six months. After that, the vice would assume the role as president, but then we would, the council would take another vote, even though the vice is the president. He would basically take that vote on the president and the vice.
So it's for both, the president's removed for a vote of confidence, the vice president would assume the president's role, in which case there'd be a new vote on who the vice president would be. The vice president's removed by a vote of confidence, the same would follow that there'd be a vote for the vice president, so the vice president automatically moves into president role.
Okay, so then the council would take a vote to replace the vice president?
Correct.
Is there a second?
I'll say it.
Chuck's second, it's on here? All opposed? Motion carried. Um, are you gonna go ahead and add that section into rules then and present it to us for a second?
Yeah, I actually don't have a copy of rules, because I've presented with a copy.
Okay, anybody else have anything for the agenda?
Can I make a motion to adjourn?
Well, let's make sure everybody, is there a motion? Hold on, is there any other, uh, any other agenda that the council might add? No. Uh, finally, Mr. Mahalo, thank you all for staying so late, I really appreciate your participation.
Okay, uh-
Can you state your name, sir?
Uh, do I?
State your name.
Uh, Hamilton.
And you have two minutes, sir. You have two minutes to talk.
Okay, I'll take a minute, uh, but I've got two issues. Uh, one is, I live in Laura, I studied vision, and they got speed limits on there, it's 25 mile an hour. But most people think it's a 52 mile. So we need, uh, for police, uh, escort, I mean, more patrol, or maybe we can put a speed law. So that, uh, all the way down to the cul-de-sac, you can turn around and come back up and that's one way in, one way out, you know? So it really makes it dangerous for kids out there playing, you know, a lot of them. It used to be that we didn't have to do kids in the neighborhood, got more kids over now than you had in 15 years, you know? Uh, especially with the people down in the Lower End with all the park buildings. Uh, the second issue is, uh, we got a broken dog that runs around the neighborhood, it's brown, and we call the dog catcher. Dog catcher says, uh, he's only got one trap and it's broke, a life trap. And I don't understand how come a dog catcher only got one trap, you know? I mean, they're doing one, one animal around, you know, so he needs more equipment so he can catch, uh, things that want to run, run the neighborhood. So I have my issues and thanks for listening, Chris.
The, the dog catcher is a county employee and it's not a town employee?
Go ahead.
The dog catcher is a county employee?
No, it's, uh, the dog itself, it's somebody dumped it out.
Well, I know, but the dog catcher isn't one of our employees, it's county.
Okay, okay, I understand, it's county employee.
Yeah.
Okay, but anyway, you still need more help and he didn't, more life traps, you know?
I live in that area and I've seen him around the old before. I live over next to the cemetery and I have a son who runs over here.
I, I've got a similar problem, I give my-
I'm sorry, so I live over in your area on Main World Road next to the cemetery. And I just seen that around the old yesterday or the day before, it's the first time I seen him and my wife made a comment, yeah, he's been hanging around now by lately.
Right, he's, uh, we, we named him, uh, the fugitive. He's a good runner, right? Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Any other comments? John, do you want to make a motion to adjourn?
To make a motion to adjourn?
Is there a second?
I'll say it.
Curtis, second in all favor? All opposed? Motion carried.